I will call the Glassboro zoning board of adjustments, regular business meeting to order for February 15th, 2024. Tyree, could you please read the open statement?
Pursuant to the Open Public Media Act, I hereby announce that adequate news this meeting, as required by said act, has been provided by blocking the scheduled meetings for the year 2024, which schedule was sent to the South Jersey Times, the Borough Clerk, and was posted on the Borough Hall bulletin board.
All rise for the sweep and the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the roll call, please.
Mr. Mooney.
Here.
Mr. Alice.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Here.
Mr. Santor.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Perner.
Here.
Ms. Wyman.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Here.
Mr. Casabun.
Here.
Ms. Adamson.
Here.
And let the record reflect that Ms. Camiola and Ms. LaFritti have been excused.
Mr. Alice, could you swear in our professionals, please?
Well, certainly. I want to ask each of you to raise your right hand. And do each of you swear a firm testimony about the give is true and correct to best your knowledge of information and belief?
I do.
Yes.
That's two yeses, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, thank you. Everybody has a copy of the minutes? Are there any comments?
I just want to make one comment. On the minutes that I sent to you, I did not have the three members that were excused for that night, so I have corrected the minutes to reflect that Mr. Harvey, Mr. Santor, and Ms. Wyman were excused that night. So that's the correction on the minutes that I have made.
Sound good. The correction being made, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? So be it. Alright, everybody has a copy of the bills. Any questions with that? If there are no questions, you can have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? So be it. Alright, we did have some incoming and outgoing correspondence that we all got. Anything we need to talk about?
No, I don't think so. The one letter from Hayden Ball, I believe Mr. Alice has prepared an extension, so we will get that in his report when he gives that. And the other two are just updates from the site plans for the busy streams that both of our professionals provided.
Let's go on to the public portion. Is there anybody in the public that has anything to say on a non-agenda item this evening? I see there's a lot of people here. Nope? Alright, with that being said, we have two postponements this evening, if anybody here is here to hear. ZB 2314, Anna Travolaski and Jose De Fritas on Kentucky Ave. They're postponing until next month. They're not going to have to renotice. And also, South Jersey Investments LLC, they have postponed. They're going to have to renotice. So, first up, ZB 23-12, Michael Stotily, 340 North Main Street, Lot 14, Lot 12, Zone C4, looking for use variance, a minor site plan to build a single-family dwelling in the C4 district.
Good evening, members of the board, professionals, and members of staff. My name is David Carlemere. I'm the attorney representing the applicant, Mike Stotily. We are here for that minor site plan and use variance. And if I can just ask for a moment, just for clarification, as you went through the roll call, I think there were six voting members present in the roll call?
Well, let's double, let's double check. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I'm counting seven.
Okay. I did, I just wanted to make sure that my checking was appropriate. We're, we're ready to proceed. Our professionals are here. I gave a list into Tyree for their names. We have actually applicant Mike Stotily. Mike Abula is our engineer, and Ron Paul is our architect that's going to be giving testimony. Do you want to swear?
Well, that's great. Why don't we swear amen, since they're all standing and nearby? So gentlemen, if you'd be so kind, I'd ask each of you to raise your right hand. And do each of you swear a firm testimony about the give is true and correct to best your knowledge of information and belief?
I do.
Well, that was three yeses, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Carlemere, thank you.
So I would like to first call the applicant, Mike Stotily, by May. Mr. Stotily, you've been sworn in. You're, you're the owner of the premises, 340 Main Street, here in Glassboro.
Yes, I am.
And you're the application before the board, seeking a minor site plan and use variance for the structure that you want to place on this property.
Yes.
I would like you to give the board some testimony. How long have you been on the property, and what's the current use of that property now?
We bought the property back in 1988, and it's, it's used as a rental property right now. There's a family that's writing that.
So it's been consistently used as a rental property?
Yes.
And you recognize that the, that condition or currently a non-conforming structure of use, is that correct?
Yes.
And you understand the principles of the non-conforming use?
Yes.
But knowing all that, is your desire to tear down that building and come before the board to give a permission to build a new structure on there?
Yes.
Now, could you give the board some ideas to why you desire to remove this structure and build a new structure on this property? Yeah, I will.
So presently, there's been a lot of deterioration in the house. It's old. This old house is shelling. All the windows and doors are, you know, not working as well. And water comes in the basement, and there's some rot in the, in the framing in the lower areas. And it's just been patch after patch after patch. And it's getting to the point where it's becoming unsightly. It doesn't look well in, on the street and to the neighborhood, especially with all the work that's been going on on that street, and all the homes that have been redone. Now, this one stands as an eyesore, I feel, in the community. So we're planning to, hopefully, tear it down. We have the lot next door that the zoning board approved a few years ago for a similar house to be built there, which will start probably early spring. We're almost at the point where we're getting our permit. And we want to build the exact same thing next door, so that we have two that are matching and pleasant aesthetically to the neighborhood, as opposed to one new one and one old one. We want to build a safer house. What's there now has a driveway that goes out to Route 47, which is unsafe. We would eliminate that, making it safe, safe for parking. When we tore down the house on 346, which is the one next door, we had it done professionally. We would do the same, everything taken away in dumpsters, and then proceed to build this new house. If you look at the neighborhood, I don't know if I want to give this picture back.
Yeah, I have. There's a series of pictures. You have copies of those in your hand. Could you tell the board how you received those pictures? Did you take them?
Yeah, basically, you went out and took some pictures of, you know, showing what the street looks like. I mean, you're all familiar with the, with the neighborhood, I'm sure. It's your town. And, but when you look at it, you kind of can get a little better idea, you know?
Before you start going, I have, if I may submit these, I have seven photographs in packets. I took the liberty to mark them, A1 through A7, if I can submit them.
Well, sure. Why don't, we're just going to mark it A1, and collectively, that, would you already mark them, A1 through A7?
Yeah, you can just pass them out. They're all-
Mr. Stotily marked them as he gave them to me. They're delivered, they're in packets of seven.
Well, hang on a second. Alright, so there, how many?
There's seven pictures there.
Seven pictures in each packet?
Yeah.
Alright, great. Well, you know what, Mr. Carlemere, why don't you assist us, because you're mobile, you're standing up. So I'll take one and start spreading them around, and then Mr. Stotily will gather his thoughts, and then he'll be prepared to identify them for the record under your questioning, so we all know what we're talking about and what we're looking at.
If we look at them.
Well, hang on a second. Your lawyer is doing what he's supposed to be doing, and he's going to come back and question you. So you gotta wait for him.
So the photographs that we just submitted, you had them marked A1 through A7 as a packet. Now, when did you take these pictures?
This last past week.
And can you describe the, how the pictures were taken? I want to direct your attention to the first four that are marked A1, 2, 3, and 4. If you can tell the board where you're standing when you took the pictures, and what do the pictures represent, as you go through them individually?
So if you lay them out in front of you on top row, A4 being on the left side, 4, 3, 2, 1, that's the other side of the street, looking out the front door of the property we're talking about, 341 Main. So A4 would be to your left, and then A1 would be to your right. So it would be 4, 3, 2, 1. And then if you did the next row down, you'd have 5, 6, 7, again, starting on your left, 5, 6, 7.
So let's just tell the board, A1 through A4, where were the pictures taken? Were you just standing on your lot?
I was standing on my lot, looking across the street. So you look at that red house on A1, that's what you see. That's the Docker Hill House.
Okay. And can you kind of go through that, and tell the board what they represent from you taking the pictures?
So they're, they're all rental properties. As you can see, students rent those, you know, and they're all kind of follow the same composure. As you get to A3, then you see newer homes. The 2183 and the 2184 are all new. These are the kind of homes that I'm projecting to put up. Modern, newer homes, developing that good aesthetic appeal of a college rental street that's, you know, not all in dilapidated. And again, in tearing this house down, instead of having one old, one new next to each other, we've got two, just like you see in A4, where you see the two gray houses that, of course, mine will be much smaller, but, you know, that's what you would see. A nice new appearance for the community.
I want to direct now your attention to what you marked as three sets, A5, A6, and A7. Can you describe them to the board, and tell them where you were standing when you took those pictures?
So I was standing across the street, looking at the side of the street that my house is on. And if you look, you see A5 is the fourplex. That's the first rental property after my home, as you walk down the street.
So looking at that photograph, A5 is your home or property to the left of that house?
To the left of that house. There's an easement driveway for the medical building on Dulce Drive, and then, then there's my house. If you look to the right, you know, you look at A6, and you look at A7, and you see more homes. And again, you see the rental situations. If you look at A7, the house there was redone. And again, the house itself, I'm not talking about the parking, but the house itself is a, is a newer house.
Do you know when that house was approximately reconstructed?
A year and a half to two years ago.
Okay. So are, you're representing to the board by showing those photographs that that block of homes, both sides of this property, on both sides of the street, has residential rental homes?
Yes.
The rental homes, are they mostly for college students?
Yeah, 99%.
Is that the intent that you have for your structure?
Yes.
And the property that, current use of that with a homeowner, is it rented now?
Yes, it is rented now.
Okay. And are they students at, at the-
At this time, no, it's a small family, but they're going to be moving soon. So they're, it's just a temporary situation.
So, so there is, you have a home on this property now that you plan on demolishing, tearing down, and building a new one. So why are you taking that approach, again, if you can tell the board, rather than just try to fix the property that you have?
Well, it's very similar to the house that I tore down back in the 90s. That was on 346. It's got to the point where you're, you know, you're patching, you're fixing. You know, you only can make old new, so, so long. And it just becomes one big patch job. We rent differently than most landlords in the township. We have high standards. I have a full-time maintenance guy that does it all, all day, every day. I have a maintenance property manager in my office. Her name is Mary. So between the two of them and myself, we really do a high standard. We get the parents involved. All our homes are remodeled. We're in the home improvement business. We have our home center there. It's right next to 346. And we're right there. Look out the window and the door, you can see both of these properties. But, you know, we've, we've done a lot with all our homes, and we want to bring this property to that same standard. And if you look at the street, it just seems like all of the owners are doing that with the homes. They're upgrading these homes to where they look, they look better. It just doesn't look like a dilapidated street. And it's, we're not the average slumlord kind of renter. A lot of these people that are renting homes, they don't care. They just put these kids in homes and just don't do anything. And we get the parents involved. The parents often say, wow, you guys make a nice house. I can live here. And that's what we want to do. We can do that better if we take this house down and put another new house next to the new house that's going up now. And it would look just like A4. Again, half a cent in the street, we have nice, nice houses that are new.
Now, you have your architect here that will present to the board kind of description of the house that's going up there. And you also have your engineer here that's going to talk about the site improvements. But from your point of view, the, would you describe the current condition of your site as far as ingress onto Main Street, and the ingress, egress onto Dulce Drive?
In, in doing it the way we're projecting, we would eliminate all the dangers of, of bad parking. If you look at some of the houses on the pictures, A7, you got 12 cars trying to back out on Main Street. It's crazy. And I know, you know, in, in past meetings with the zoning board, we heard a lot about backing out on Main Street. And, yeah, so we tried to change it. Both of the homes that we're projecting have turnaround parking lots, to where if there's no backing out on Main Street, we would close the apron on 47, on the back of this property that we're talking about, 340 North Main Street. We'd close that completely, so there's no dangerous pulling out on Route 47, people come through. Since we, we have a high standard with, with trash removal, all our properties, trash cans in and out, we're on top of all the exteriors. And being right there, we would do the same. Again, from a safety standpoint, you couldn't ask for a better situation.
Do you have a property manager that takes care of your rental properties?
Yes. I have a property manager full-time. It's Mary Harrow. She works out of my office. And then I have maintenance John Robbins. He's, he's on maintenance 24/7.
Do your maintenance individuals, employees, do they do inspections to see if the trash is being maintained?
Yes, yes. We, all three of us ride around completely. And Monday night, you know, Main Street, the houses, Monday night. Wednesday morning, everything else has to come in. Friday morning, everything else. There are three days, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, all our properties, we ride around. And very rarely do we have Ray or anybody from the office calls with any complaints. It's always something that nobody knew about. It was beyond our control, and we jump on it right away.
And your proposed design for this building, as you have your architect here that will give that representation, but you're doing it as six, six bedrooms? Is that what you're doing?
Yes. The, the previous house that was approved is going to be six bedrooms, and the height's going to be the same. So it was just logical for us to do the same thing on this lot, so that they would match and look aesthetically nice to the neighborhood, and, and help us keep that, that high standard. Basically, I mean, I can patch for years, but I want to patch an old home and then, you know, have that used, just-
Now, when you say the one that you're building, that's the one that was approved a year and a half ago?
A little, yeah, a little longer than that, but because of, there's some COVID issues, and I was sick, and we had prolonged it. But it's ready to be permitted very shortly.
And the design you're planning on this is the same, the one that's designed on 346?
Yes, yes. Same exact house, six bedrooms, same height, same look, you know, big sun, things like that. But, you know, it'll look very well landscaped, well proportioned, all that trash areas set up, you know, water drainage. Well, that's considered.
I have nothing further, Mr. Stotily.
I got a question. You didn't, you provided the pictures of the neighborhood houses. Did you provide us a picture? You had one of your actual house?
You know, when I got here tonight, I thought about that. I just took a picture of the house. I did not. I apologize for that.
And you referenced the, the, the last time you were in front of this board. Did that lot have non-conforming issues, or did it, was it inconformant the way it was?
Very similar, very similar. There was non-conforming issues. Same, it was commercial C4. The height was, was an issue. Parking was an issue, and all of that was-
So is that lot size smaller or bigger than what you have?
Very similar, very close.
Or smaller or bigger?
Yeah, maybe. Well, the lot goes like this. So it gets bigger in one way. It's not rectangle, you know? It's a big triangle, so.
Well, give him square footage. That'll just put it in stark terms.
I'll have to go to Mike for that.
Well, you got professionals.
Mr. Abula will be able to testify, because he was before the board-
Well, you can just tell, he's sort of under oath. You could just answer Mr. Lopez's question.
Mr. Lopez, the, the lot that you're talking about is known as Lot 13.01. That was .19 acres. It was wider, but not as deep. This one is .18 acres. It's a little bit narrower. It's 61 feet. The other one was 80 feet wide. But this is deeper, because it's a pie shape. And as you go further away from the point, your lot depth begins to increase.
So you're talking about the two that look, if I looked at Popeyes, you'd be two next to the-
That is correct. You're standing at Popeyes?
I'm looking at the two.
The one, you'll be looking straight across?
Two buildings.
Medical building, a building.
Commercial space that you talked about.
A vacant parcel and Stotily's Home Improvement Center.
I mean, a picture would have been good, so people could visualize.
I have nothing further, Mr. Stotily, if there's any board members have any other questions.
Yep.
So I'd like to call our architect, Ron Val, if he can give some testimony. And we have a, a board set up that shows the look of the home. If that's easy for anyone to bring, I think we'd rather us bring it to the center.
Can everybody see that?
Yes.
How about that?
Talking about turning faces.
See all the students?
We have a lot of, yeah.
Our student on this side-
Well, students here show we're actually all going to be a little inclusive.
How about that?
Those, those people. Those two.
We want Mr. Harvey to be able to see too. Maybe just back up a little bit.
Yeah, backed up. Yeah, 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 doing good.
Can you see Mr. Harvey?
Turn around.
Yeah, can you turn?
Turn to the left.
There you go.
Okay?
That's fine.
Before you begin, can you give the board some of your educational qualifications?
I'm a licensed architect in New Jersey, several other states. Been practicing for many years. Most of all, work is in New Jersey, and we specialize in light commercial residential. In your career, the obligation to appear before any of the zoning or planning boards in the state of New Jersey?
Oh, yes.
This is an objection I would like to submit for the architect. Can you begin to testify?
Yeah, Mr. Fall's welcome. And as an expert, able to give expert architectural testimony, so please take it away.
Okay, so in your professional capacity, you hired by Mr. Stotily to design the building that's going to be presented to the board for this lot, 340 Main Street?
Yes.
Before we begin, did you also participate with Mr. Stotily in the design of the building that was approved for 346 Main Street?
Yes, I did.
And looking at what's here today, is that the same type of architectural design that was put on 346 Main Street?
Yes.
So can you kind of give the board the characteristics of the building, its height, shape, bedrooms?
It's a two-story wood frame structure. Each floor is approximately 1,120 square feet. The first floor has two bedrooms and a mix of kitchen, dining, living, and utility areas. The second floor is four bedrooms and bathroom. We have two entrances, a main entrance and a side entrance. We have a height of 28.6, and I might say that we did reduce the height by about a foot from the initial concept, which was mentioned in your professional review letter. So that height has been reduced by about a foot in an attempt to comply better with your ordinances. So we're at 28.6 now, from a grade plane up to the peak of the roof. We have a 612 slope. It's, it's typical wood frame residential construction, siding, fiberglass shingle roof, double hung windows, typical with, with, you see many residents.
So can you give an idea of the floor plan that's on, on each, each floor? Perhaps we should mark that as A8, just for the record?
Well, certainly, sure. And what property is that known as? A8?
This is the property that the house is being put on?
Well, the other side was A8, right?
This is A82. Well, it's the same drawing. It's the same house. It's not a different house.
Turn around for a second. Okay.
These are the other, we'll call the elevations, what the house was-
So I got you. So do you not want that to be A8? You're saying?
Well, I, I thought, well, we can do A8 on this side and A9 on the other, sorry.
Mr. Lopez.
Okay.
That's what I thought you were heading. So, so A8 are the elevations. I just want the guy to, the Mr. Fall to say it. But that's fine, we said it. So he agrees. And then the other side.
Can I just ask a question?
Please.
We did exhibit A1, which consisted of seven photos. Did we-
Well, no, 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 no. We, we, we had reset, because Mr. Stotily had already numbered them, A1 through A7. So we honored that.
All on the same page.
Make it easier. And now we're A8, and now we're turning it, and we've now seen-
So A9.
A9.
A8 would be the elevations, and there's four elevations representing the four sides of the home.
Right.
So A9 will be the floor plans.
There you go.
First floor and second floor.
Thank you.
The first floor has two bedrooms, living, kitchen, bathrooms, utility areas. Second floor has four bedrooms, a laundry area, and a, and a large bathroom. And of course, interconnected by an internal staircase.
So the exterior design, let's go back to that for a moment. The exterior design you, you had, has it been decided by Mr. Stotily what the exterior side is going to be?
Typically, we put a vinyl sliding on this. Low maintenance, a myriad of colors, profiles. It's usually a good choice for residential construction. And that we're above grade, we're up down that grade, where we're subject to damage by snow shovels, lawnmowers, weed whackers. We're set up out of the grade a bit to protect the foundation.
I don't have any other questions.
If I could just elaborate a bit on, on Mr. Stotily's discussion about the existing residents. We, we did look at that with Mr. Stotily in terms of what, what possibly could be done to renovate it. And we really came to the conclusion that, of course, it's an older structure, and with today's model codes, there's always a, an improvement in each issuance of the codes to have a home that better complies with the needs of today's construction design and methods. Not only from electrical and plumbing and structural and life safety, but a bigger issue today, we find, is energy conservation. And that may, may range from better insulating values to better air control within a house, higher efficiency systems. And we find that we, it's economically infeasible or practically not even doable in an older residence. You get air leakage, poor insulating values, and that stays with you forever. So with a new home, we're going to come even closer to meeting today's model codes, especially when it comes to energy efficiency.
Right down to a green roof.
Right down to a green roof.
Sure.
Question, the existing house, how many square feet is that? This one's 1,100.
1,120.
It's bigger?
Per square foot, I'm sorry.
The, the house is there now?
Per floor. 1,120 per floor.
The one that's there?
This one.
No, the one that's there now.
The one that's there now is, is smaller, maybe 900 square feet.
900 square feet total is small. What do you mean by 900 square feet total?
So this one's 200 plus a bit?
This was a little bit bigger, yes. And, and Mr. Stotily's desire to get more bedrooms to make it a more profitable venture, it's, it's just not doable within that existing home, the existing layout, wall configuration, et cetera.
So I mean, essentially, it's just 2,240 square feet versus 1,800 square feet?
Yes.
So it's not a light year away, it's just a little bit bigger?
No, no, no.
Alright.
And, and the room sizes are larger. Older homes tend to have smaller room sizes, steeper stairs. What we have today will comply with today's codes in terms of minimum bedroom size requirements, rise in run of stairs.
My question was more towards the footprint on the property, not really the size.
1,120.
Yeah, ADL holds everything. Obviously, they're not up to today's standards and desires.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So I want to direct all your, all your attention to the height. You started out in your testimony saying that you adjusted the height on the building. If you can go back perhaps to the elevation, which is A8, and the building as it's designed now, is there any other way to reduce the height and still have the aesthetics of view of the building?
Well, we, we put a 612 roof slope on it, which you can see here. And yes, it could be flattened, but that, in my opinion, detracts from the aesthetics of the house. It, it begins to look like a very squatty roof. I think, I think we need a certain profile to the roof to be more proportionate with the height and length and width of the home. And, and we may gain it maybe a foot in shrinking the slope. But we've, we already did that, as I said, from once your professional's review letter was issued. We already did take it down a foot to 28.6 from the 29 that was mentioned in the earlier report. But we've al- we already did that, as I said, from once your professional's review letter was issued, we already did take it down a foot to twenty-eight six from the twenty-nine that was mentioned in the, uh, earlier report.
Is the, uh, peak design on this structure that you've provided to Mr. Sottili, uh, similar to all the other homes that are on that lot?
Yes, I think if, if you look at the illustrations in the photographs, you'll see that the, the roof construction is noticeable from the street you see. It's not a, a low slope roof or a flat roof, and it's just part of the aesthetics of the design.
So it's more in keeping with the, the visual view of the rest of the block, Main Street?
I would say yes, yes.
I don't have any further questions.
Any questions from the board? No, not yet, no.
Okay. Okay, so I have, uh, our engineer, Mr. Abula. So you, you've been sworn in, before you give your testimony, can you tell the board your qualifications and education?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think we, we recognize him, he's been here a number of times, and it's good to see him again, welcome back, and he is able to give expert testimony as a professional.
I appreciate that, thank you for the courtesy.
So you're, you're familiar with the total application that's been filed this now before the board, uh, addressing the, uh, use variances and issues in the site plan that you, uh, you've worked on. Uh, can you, uh, can you address those issues to the board?
Yes, I can, uh, I just want to give a little bit of background, uh, e- even for the sake of redundancy, but because it is a use variance, I believe it's important just to put it into the record. I was also the design engineer, planner and the engineer of the previous application that came in, I think two thousand and twenty, and that was for the adjacent lot, which is thirteen point oh one. Uh, that, that particular application, uh, had similar, uh, variances, a use variance, a height variance. Uh, where, what it didn't have is it didn't have side yard setback variance, I was able to look at the prior application. The reason for that is because the, the, uh, that lot was wider by about twenty feet. Our existing lot is narrower by about twenty-four percent, it goes from eighty to sixty-one. So some of the variances that we'll have associated, and we'll discuss a little bit later on, are, are, are rarely predicated on the fact that we have a narrow lot, which turns into a C one hardship variance. And I'll go into that a little bit later, but, uh, thi- this particular, uh, property, it has an existing house, it's located to the very north portion of the property. Uh, it has two points of access, one along Delcia Drive, which is also a New Jersey Route forty-seven, and one along, uh, Main Street. Uh, this particular development is point one eight acres in size, uh, thereby any development that we do will not meet the thresholds for major development. Uh, thereby it doesn't disturb more than an acre, and it doesn't, uh, generate more than one quarter acre of imperious coverage. And therefore this, this lot is not subject to the stormwater regulations of NJC seven colon eight A, which are the best management practices, uh, which have been updated recently. So those particular, um, applications and comments that are in the review, but just by way of background, really do not apply because this is considered a minor development. It's not, it's not classified because it doesn't go into the threshold for a major development. Uh, this particular lot provides, um, uh, parking spaces for six, uh, units. It is a, a building that is approximately twenty-two feet, twenty-two percent bigger than the existing building footprint, uh, and thereby, um, uh, requiring a, a little bit of room and variances, as, as we'll discuss in a little bit. Uh, this, this particular application, uh, proposes to use the water and sewer located on Main Street, it also provides for landscaping. Approximately forty-seven percent of the lot will remain in a long landscape, uh, condition. Therefore, uh, the landscaping area in that sense is met through, through the preservation of open space and landscaping around the perimeter. Furthermore, this, this house has, uh, developments indicated by Mr. Fall that, uh, it's larger and it has certain heights. And one of the, one of the important things to, to note is, and, and it's in Ms., uh, Adamson's letter, is houses compatible with the neighborhood. So by way of introduction, that Mr. Fall already done, is, um, those houses and, and other developments and structures down that road are all two-story houses. If, if they were to do anything, some of them probably would require, uh, height variances for the near fact that, um, they're already i- in that location. You have across the street, on Main Street that is, you have the campus terrace, uh, apartments, and, and they're two stories. So your, your neighborhood is surrounded by, by buildings that, uh, really are hard pressed to, to meet their twenty-foot requirement. And, and to propose a building, a new building that's squattier and flatter, to comply, actually does the reverse. Then a building that exceeds your ordinance by being compatible with the community and the surrounding structures. I believe the only building that I can recall that's one story would be your, your center, right? It's the only, it's the only, uh, building that I can think of right now, as, as I looked, uh, uh, at the site that I can recall, across the street, you have the Popeyes, and you have the deli across the street, so. But on Main Street, those buildings, so, so to have a building and, and to create it to meet and comply, uh, with those requirements, then actually detracts from the neighborhood, which is the reversal of what we're trying to do, we're trying to be compatible. And for that, we're asking the board to consider our application for, uh, uh, our D one use variance, and I believe it's a, a D six, correct, for, for height variance. Um, and also D four for, for density. So, uh, that, that is, uh, a little bit by way of background into our application, there were two letters issued, uh, one by, was by Remington and Verd, uh, dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. And, and that was signed by Ms. Adamson, and the other one, uh, is a letter issued by Sickles and Associates dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. And, um, if there's any question with regards to the background, I'd like to proceed into providing some testimony in regards to the use variance, and also to the bulk variances associated with this development.
Proceed.
Okay, thank you very much. A- as listed in the letter issued by Ms. Adamson, uh, there are a series of variances that we need, she's done a great job in summarizing those variances in the last page of her letter. Uh, there's a use variance, um, which is a D one, and there is, uh, also a D four and a D six variance, they're associated with height, exceedance of height by ten percent, as well as density. Because you have Flurry ratio of twenty percent, and what we're proposing is a Flurry ratio of twenty-seven point six percent. So, uh, one of the things that we need to be able to provide to the board is, um, an understanding of how this evans is a municipal use law. How is this a positive thing? How does this meet the need for, uh, uh, or benefits to the community? And I have outlined, uh, some special reasons for it, uh, that I'd like to present to the board for how they should consider, uh, this application. Uh, one of it is to be able to do a site suitability. One of the reasons why a use would go somewhere, uh, we had to explain its site suitability. Its site suitability is really just the proximity to the Rowan University campus. Uh, you, this is a place that has indicated that we want to rent it out to college students, it's in close proximity, I've done an aerial view. Uh, it is minutes away by vehicle, maybe a little bit longer if you wanted to walk, uh, but it's in close proximity to the campus. And therefore, uh, this site is suitable because of its proximity. The site is suitable because it, it's something that currently contains a dwelling, and it will contain a dwelling after it is developed and enhanced with, uh, modern design features and more energy friendly uses as, as Mr. Fall has indicated. It's also suitable because, uh, it, it provides, uh, water and sewer, it's a small site and couldn't really have septic. So the fact that there's public utilities available at the road makes this site suitable to be able to handle, uh, the, the particular flows that will be generated by this use. It's also, it's also suitable because it, it is consistent with the neighborhood, we're not proposing to do any other thing that would detract from the neighborhood. Even some of these homes that have been used for commercial purposes has been indicated, uh, by Mr. Sottili. So, um, those are the things that makes this particular site suitable, its proximity, its ability to use existing utilities, its ability to be compatible with the neighborhood. And it's a series of, of, of a mixed use, you have apartments, you have businesses, uh, you have a, a medical facility next door, you have restaurants and delis across the street. So, uh, it's really, it, it's really in keeping and therefore it's suitable, it's not going to stick out, it's not going to be an outlier, it's actually going to blend in with the community fairly well. Uh, and, and continuing with, along with the positive criteria, uh, there's special reasons that you have to give for the board to consider, why is it, uh, that the board should deviate from its master plan? Why should it deviate from its zoning ordinance, uh, to allow something that is not permitted? Uh, one of the things is, uh, found in, uh, section forty colon fifty-five, D two A, uh, to encourage municipal action to, to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a matter which is promote public health, safety morals, and general welfare. Providing a, a new home with modern amenities and, and designed for, uh, the particular times that we live in, uh, and to provide adequate housing to shelter someone is a means by which we are providing, promoting general welfare, because housing is a basic human need. Uh, we understand that, uh, this is how you would be able to provide something for someone that, uh, needs housing. Uh, and so thereby it, it promotes, uh, the, uh, basic human need and promotes the general welfare. The other reason is found in that same section, and it's, uh, two G. To provide sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of agricultural, residential, recreational, commercial, industrial uses. Um, and according to the respective requirement in order to meet the need of all New Jersey citizens. I do not think that it, it is a stretch to say that, uh, Rowan with its growth over the years and its, its expanding, um, um, student body. We currently employ a Rowan, Rowan engineer, he's, he's a junior, and so I get the opportunity firsthand to talk to him, that there is a need. That this particular house, uh, provides and meets a need, not only for Glassboro, but also for Rowan, a, a major component in this community. So it, it does meet a need, it is a sufficient size, uh, it provides adequate parking, uh, and is able to access, uh, the utilities and is able to access the, uh, county highway. Uh, so the other is to promote a desirable visual environment, uh, through creative development techniques. As indicated already, as the pictures have been handed out, uh, this house would be one of the last houses that begins to upgrade the looks of that particular stretch of Main Street. Uh, obviously, uh, you can patch this as indicated by Mr. Sottili, at some point it just becomes a, a, a patched job. Uh, he wants to be able to enhance the look of the community, enhance the look of the street, and we believe that would create a more, uh, pleasing visual environment, something nicer to look at. So we believe that those things are positive reasons, they're contained within municipal use law, they're positive reasons why, uh, if the board were to deviate, uh, why should they consider this a good reason to deviate? Notwithstanding those special reasons, the other side of that coin is, as indicated in Ms. Adamson's letters, to say, um, how does this not adversely impact the community? How can we promote something and not be a detriment? Because when you do something, there's always a cause and effect. Is the effect of promoting, of promoting this use going to cause more harm than good? And, and I'm here to say that I believe that, uh, it's not going to do that, I believe that the, the, the deposit is far outweigh the detriment that one might consider could be, um, uh, a result of this development, there's no development that doesn't cause, uh, um, ripple effects. But we believe that in the context of what we presented this evening, uh, a, a new, a new building, a modern development, uh, a building that has the, uh, potential to be able to house a need for students in the, in the Rowan community, we believe that that far outweighs any detriment associated with granting a use variance and/or associated with granting the bulk variances that we'll talk into a little bit. So one of the things you look at in that criteria is, will this ruin my neighborhood? Uh, are you going to put a trash system plant next to my house? Are you going to provide, uh, something that's not in keeping with the community as been stated already by Mr. Sottili and Mr. Fall? And not to beat a dead horse, we believe that this is compatible, uh, and so it won't detract from the community. I think it will enhance the community because you're going to have probably one of the last pieces, uh, of, of a house to be knocked down and brought up to s- to higher standards, and it'll be compatible with what's there. Uh, Mr. Fall talked about the building being two stories high with a peak that's consistent with the community, so it's very hard to say that this would impact, adversely impact, uh, the, the, uh, the community and detract from the community. Uh, the other, the other thing is, um, the character, so it's not going to be, uh, destroy the character of the community. The other is parking, uh, we have six, six units and we have six parking spaces. Uh, we have provided an access road, uh, entrance that, that meets the county standards to be twenty-four foot wide. If you look at the current condition right now, to be able to salvage that building and to be able to, to be able to put in the parking and meet the requirements that the county would implement, uh, you wouldn't be able to do it. You'd be so close to the house, you, you would actually, uh, almost make this, uh, a hazard because parking would be so close, and the drive aisle would be so close to the existing home. So having been through this before with the county on the adjacent lot, we know exactly what they're looking for, they're going to look for a driveway that has a certain width, they're going to look for a, an easement as they requested on the property to the north, and we have set our, our parking, if you look at the plan, because this is taken right out of that set sheet two, we have started our parking just beyond the easement. Uh, we've been able to fit in the six parking spaces, we've been able to provide a drive aisle that is sufficiently wide, uh, for the, uh, for the motors to be able to come in, pull into a stall, and then not have to back out into Main Street, but actually pull ahead, uh, nose first out into Main Street, thereby eliminating sometimes the potential for conflicts and accidents that may occur when people are, are backing out. The other thing to consider is, uh, the detriment to the community, the use of its resources, but there's a building that currently exists now. It uses public water, it uses public sewer. Uh, if there's a call, uh, the EMT, the fire, and or the police would attend to any kind of emergency call. So there is no new resources that would be used because something is being put up, uh, that currently doesn't exist. So there is no, and there's no, uh, taking away from the resources of the community, uh, and, and the other consideration is noise, glare, and odor. As I've said, we live with forty-seven right behind us, so there's a lot of traffic that make a lot of noise. Uh, you have Popeyes, you have the deli, there's other uses that create their own kind of noise. We don't believe that this is going to impact or be detrimental, as a matter of fact, the building next to us, uh, is a, um, dental office or medical office, I believe. So they're, they're gone by the end of workday, and, and there's really nobody there for us to disturb, if you will. So we don't believe that noise, glare, or odor are, are negative impacts to the community. So we would feel that, given these considerations, that the board would, will kindly favor the look upon granting a use variance for this particular application. And so my conclusion is that, and is my opinion as a professional planner, that, uh, this does not constitute substantial detriment to the public good, and nor does it create impact, uh, an impairment of the zone plan and of the ordinance. I would like to continue to the bulk variances, there's a C one hardship, uh, but if there's any questions regarding the use variance, I'd take some questions now.
Okay. Go ahead.
Uh, there are, um, bulk variances that are being required, and, and it's my opinion that these are bulk variances associated with a C one, or what we would call a hardship. The lot is sixty-one point three one feet wide, it is greater than the fifty foot that is required, uh, but that can't be seen in the vacuum, uh, because there is buffers that are required. Uh, Ms., Ms. Adamson notes that there's a twenty-five foot, if I understand correctly, which is inclined, is that there must be a twenty-five foot buffer along the property lines. If that is the correct interpretation of mine, when you take seven, twenty-five feet from the southerly property line, twenty-five feet from the northerly property line, all you're left with is eleven feet. It's just barely, it's just as wide as a access aisle or a parking stall for a handicap accessibility, which is eleven feet wide, not including the five-foot drive aisle. So a strict adherence to the ordinance puts an undue hardship on my client to be able to comply with your ordinance and to be able to develop or make use of this particular property. So what we have here is a hardship case, and, and because of the narrowness of the lot, it's sixty foot wide, uh, when you put a house that is going to be of size to be able to accommodate, uh, the, the, the bedrooms, uh, we run into needing a side yard setback for the house. Uh, those have been noted on the plan, uh, and where fifteen feet is required, our shortest distance is, is nine point three one feet on what I would call the northerly side. Uh, and it is approximately twelve feet, um, on the southerly side, for a combined total width of twenty-one point three one feet, where thirty feet would be required. And this is a result of providing a house that can be of size, can be, have bedrooms of size, hallways, uh, stairs, kitchen, that would be of size. Anything less than that, obviously, um, does, does not render the, 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 the residence functional. So we have a hardship because the strict adherence of the ordinance would, would not allow us to build it. Uh, we also have, uh, a hardship for front yard setback because the parking stalls are of a certain length and width, uh, that pushes us further and further back, uh, to, towards Route forty-seven. We have to keep twelve and a half foot of a, what they call a right-of-way easement for the county, and then we begin putting in the parking stalls to be able to meet the demand of the particular use and the rooms that we have, which pushes our building further and further back. Depending upon how you look at it, and I'd like to be able to offer this, this evening. it is indicated that on reverse frontages, you're supposed to have one be the road frontage or the front yard setback, and then the other road frontage is supposed to be the rear yard setback. And if I could then be able to present to the board that I meet the front yard setback from Route forty-seven of twelve point one six feet where ten feet is required, and I meet the rear yard setback from what is Main Street because I'm in excess of thirty-five feet. So those are the advantages that your ordinance allows me to have because I have what is called reverse furnaces. I have furniture in the front as well as the rear of the property. So we have these hardships and therefore strict adherence would just cause undue hardship for my client to develop this particular property. There are some variances as well as waivers, and the waivers are for parking stalls, I believe. Let me just quickly look at that. So at the last page, additional screening. We'd like to be able to comply with this as far as practical. You don't have much room on either side. We also have parking lot planning, once again, we'd be glad to put more shade trees.
Well, you know what, you're gonna agree to work with the board professionals on landscaping. So you're gonna come up with something that looks nice, if the board were to grant you approval.
Yes, if the board would consider it.
I'll make it easier for you.
Yeah, great, thank you, I appreciate that. Notwithstanding those waivers and variances, I have nothing really objectional to the review letter that was provided to us from either Sicles and Associates or Remington and Burnham. Is there anything?
Thank you, I have nothing further.
No, that's the site plan, that's what was submitted as part of the application.
That is a page from the site plan.
So that's what we're working on, we testified.
No, just the last time that they were here, they were talking about this is something new and which that you are saying that Delsey Drive was now eliminated, you will not have any entry points on Delsey Drive?
That's correct.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, one thing that I did not hear you address, and that is lighting. I know you were here before, you were saying something about putting a sign out there, you know, on the entry point on Delsey Drive, looking at that, that's pretty much eliminated as far as signage? But lighting, I'm just trying to see if...
You know what, Mr. Harvey, it's funny you say that because I was literally just writing that the applicant agrees to work with the board professionals for site landscaping, and I was gonna wait for you to finish because I was gonna interrupt them and say, "And lighting." But now that you said that, do you mind I interrupted you and we're gonna say "and lighting"? So therefore, sometimes if the board were to grant the approval, you gotta be in the moment, so to speak, as regards landscaping and lighting, what makes the most sense.
We would gladly work with your professionals, lighting, landscaping.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Harvey.
Good question.
All right, Ms. Adamson.
Yes, we have a June the fourteenth letter, and I did hear the applicant state and the board also state that the applicant will work with us regarding planting and lighting. Just one thing I wanted to bring up is they will need a waiver for street trees, a full waiver, because there's no opportunity to provide street trees along Main Street, and I just wanna make certain that the board is aware of that. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Because there's sidewalk and there's less space to do so. My one concern I wanted to bring up is, the dwelling is very close to Delsey. It's twelve point one six feet from the back corner of the property. One concern that I have is noise. How are you going to address that?
Noise created by the dwelling?
No, noise created by Delsey Drive. You have a residential dwell, you know, dwelling that's twelve foot off the property line. How close are the other dwellings to the highway?
I don't know, to be honest with you. You know, if you go across the street, you look at Popeyes, just looking at them, you know, they're fairly close, obviously because they want visibility, they have no problem with visibility. As a matter of fact, you're allowed to be ten feet per your ordinance in that sense. And I understand that it's a use variance and it should be considered differently, but it really wouldn't be a topic of contention if we're putting up there a permitted use. That could come up to ten feet and really wouldn't be, wouldn't really be an issue because you're allowed to be ten feet.
Well, I think Ms. Adamson's point is that one thing is a commercial, you know, a commercial use. You know, who cares about being, you wanna be that hard up against Delsey Drive. This is presumably people who wanna study, rest, and recreate.
Right.
I could add perhaps that in order to meet the D's construction codes, you'll find that the wall construction of this home will be thicker, there'll be greater insulation, the windows and doors will be higher efficiency, double glazed, which you just don't find in the older homes. So that in itself will add to the sound attenuation from noise from Delsey Drive.
All right, well, you probably convinced me perhaps, but can you convince Ms. Adamson? Does that make sense to you, Ms. Adamson?
It makes as much as sense as practical. As long as the applicant agrees to work with us in landscaping, that's about as much as we can do. I wouldn't recommend putting a fence back there. Just take that for the record, that it will be noisy. And just going through my letter, the applicant's done a really good job going through the special reasons, the use variance, they've agreed to work with us on landscaping and lighting, and they gave us testimony on trash storage and pickup. And I need some testimony regarding conformance with affordable housing.
Before we get to affordable housing, just refresh my recollection, I apologize. Trash, trash, pickup, how's that getting handled?
Private hauler.
Private hauler, okay.
And affordable housing?
Wait a minute, you're gonna have a private hauler pick up the garbage, so you're going to put up a garbage area?
It would just be pulled up to the front, correct? You'd have a concrete pad usually on the side of your house, and it just gets pulled up to the front, very similar to...
Is it on the plan?
No, there's not on the plan.
So you're gonna be having to add that to the plan, right? Okay, is that...
I'm just waiting for Mr. Carl to...
So we're residential, and most of the tenants are gonna be student residential in that property. If the state regulations and this type of structure requires, somewhat familiar with the COA regulations throughout New Jersey, if it's a compliance that he has to meet, it was a compliance that he has to meet.
Okay, you agree to pay any fees as appropriate? I do not have any additional comments, that's all I have.
Listen, state law is state law, and it's good, Ms. Adams, it puts it out there. But if we even thought you were like the best guy in the world, we couldn't waive it. It's a requirement, so, so yeah, you're gonna comply. If it's applicable, yeah, all right.
Mr. Caspino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to touch on one thing in my letter, then get back to something that was mentioned recently. For the demolition, Mr. Satilli had said they're gonna get rid of the apron on Delsey Drive. Are you gonna get rid of the concrete and put curb back, or are you just gonna get rid of your driveway?
The whole, the whole Delsey Drive, you totally cut it. What we wanna get rid of is the driveway, everything else we're gonna leave the same.
So you're not gonna get a DOT road opening permit to do work out there?
Correct, just from behind the sidewalk into the side.
And then the landscaping would take up some of that space, perhaps in front of where the driveway was?
Correct.
And I did wanna, I wanted to ask about the trash. For a private hauler, the site's not really, the property's not set up for that, is that, how does that work in operations?
Currently, Mr. Satilli, what is the current use of that site for trash collection?
Right now, there's the bag or cans you're gonna put out and take it in every day, one for recycling. So that's the same practice.
All right, well, he's saying you're gonna have a private hauler.
Right, that's what I was...
It's not gonna be a municipality.
I don't see the reason for it. Well, we would, if, according to Mr. Satilli, if we could engage the municipality in picking it up, that would be great. It currently does it now. I don't think a private hauler needs to come in and would do the same thing that it currently does.
It's residential, so...
Right, we just need to...
All their homes on that street, as Mr. Satilli would testify to, they all have private collection.
And he has his maintenance supervised, that it's put out appropriately, trash cans aren't overflowing with trash and debris, and whatever recyclable material goes out as accordingly.
So, forgive me, but you turn me around because on the one hand, I thought you said that we're gonna go back to the borough of Glassboro picking up the trash on residential use, and then in the next breath you said the private hauler will be more attentive to a, you know, poorly maintained area, and they will accept responsibility to make sure it's not that way.
I guess the mix-up came in when we talked about the demolition in our frame of mind, that's all gonna be handled privately, he's gonna take care of all that demolition with removal, private company. But trash collection, as he indicated, is done by...
Well, I don't think that's where we gotta turn it around, but that does, I mean, obviously, the demo work is gonna get done with a private hauler, that's without saying. So now, you wanna just kinda gracefully back off of that private hauler thing and get the town back on the hook?
It's municipal, of course.
Let's be clear, okay, all right, all right.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Caspino?
Yeah, I would just close out and say that Mr. Avol has agreed to everything else in the letter. The plans are set up with standard engineering, standard curb, asphalt, grading, all that type of stuff. So that's all just very standard on the way the plan is set up. I don't have anything further for me.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. The adjacent property, I know they're gonna match each other. How many, I know that's six bedrooms as well, did you need a waiver for the parking on that? Are those spaces reduced as well so that you could fit six in there for that property?
The parking dimensions were nine by eighteen, and I believe that's smaller than what you have, correct? But the nine by eighteen is an acceptable dimension. And the other thing also that we had indicated, if I remember correctly, is that there's no curb, so the vehicle has the ability to extend further because there's open space beyond. So it's almost like having an eight twenty-foot deep parking stall.
I have a question. You said that it's six rooms, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, how many people or occupants are you trying to have in that home?
Six.
Six, yes. How many, I didn't hear.
Six.
Six.
Six, one per bedroom.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Since there's no other questions, I'd like to open this up to the public. Do I have a motion open to the public?
Open to the public.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close to be it. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this matter? Nope. All right, motion to close the public portion.
Remove.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close to be it. It's the pleasure of the board.
I'll put it there, I mean, that is, I would like to make a motion that we received the permit as it was written. All the waivers, including the variances in D one, D four, D six.
All right, so you're making a motion to approve it with all...
So really, Mr. Chairman, if I may, firstly, it's the motion to approve the request for the use variance, the additional variances, which include the height variance, the D-six variance, the Florida area ratio variance, the D-four variance, and in addition, the number of waivers, one even being the street trees and some other things, that's spread on the record, so that'll all be incorporated in, and along with those use variances, waivers, and that sort of thing, the, obviously the minor site plan. Fair enough, Mr. Harvey?
That's correct.
Sounds good, Mr. Harvey. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
All right, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lopez.
I'm for, due to the fact that he came before this board in the past for the same type for adjacent properties, so wouldn't want to put a hardship to restrict anything done on this lot, another question.
Ms. Wyman.
I'm for, I don't believe it will negatively impact the area.
Mr. Kerner.
I'm for, similar, Ms. Wyman, I don't see anything impacting the area.
Mr. Smith.
For, I don't see anything that's causing something that's detrimental to the public, and it's gonna promote a, I guess, a good look and ambiance on the location with Rowan being there.
Mr. Harden.
Four, I believe it's in compliance with the area.
Mr. Santor.
I'm for, and Mr. Satilli, you've been here before, and everything that I've seen that you do is first-class, and I know this is gonna really add to the community, and I credit you for that. And thank you.
Mr. Muni.
In favor.
You look great, guys.
Good to see you.
Thank you. We thank the board and professionals, make it very much so much.
We don't have any reports, any tip on the workshop committee?
I do.
Ah, good.
So the workshop committee met on February thirteenth. They reviewed an application from Glassboro Park LLC at East Dangor Avenue. And at East Dangor Avenue, they're looking to put a senior citizen's apartment complex there. So they agreed to work with the town and make it a redevelopment area for them to be able to put up a senior center apartment complex there on East Dangor Avenue. So that will be in the works down the route.
Well, you know what, Mr. Chair, I do. Interestingly, no, it's really not. But we had a request for a one-year extension on the final site plan approval for Vision Stream LLC Lot four thirteen, Lot fourteen, two four five, East High Street. So for your consideration, the applicant really is entitled to a couple of one-year extensions. The reason here being that, quite frankly, the New Jersey DEP has been taking, it seems like a long, long time to do the wetlands averaging and all that sort of stuff. So he's afraid he's gonna get jammed. Honestly, I don't think he fully appreciates how much time he has, but it's not the end of the world, it's not an outrageous request, and it's frankly a reasonable request, so for the board's consideration.
All right, so Resolution twenty-four dash zero eight, to grant the extension. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we extend that for you here as requested by the individual.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Lopez.
Four.
Ms. Wyman.
Four.
Mr. Kerner.
Four.
Mr. Smith.
Four.
Mr. Harden.
Four.
Mr. Santor.
Four.
And Mr. Muni.
Four.
And that's it, Mr. Chair members.
All right, we have any old business, any new business? All right, our next meeting is going to be March twenty-first. Hopefully everybody can make it. I guess we'll be hearing Kentucky Avenue.
Sure, we're gonna hear, who knows what the things we may hear.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? A second, all in favor?
It's the extra credit group. You hung out, thank you.